Good evening, everyone. This is the meeting of the Board of Selectmen Interview Committee, interviewing candidates for the zoning board of appeals tonight. I would like to read first the the rules from the governor. "This open meeting of the Board of Selectmen Interview Committee is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of June 16, 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. All members of the interview committee are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows the interview committee to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting does not feature public comment. Each vote taken this evening will be conducted by roll call vote." And I have to confirm that the other member of the subcommittee is here. Kristin, could you just say, say present? Okay, so we have a little bit of a snafu. Oh dear. Paul needs the Zoom link.
Okay. Maybe Jim, could you send him that?
Yep. Julianne, are you able to send me his email address so that I'm able to communicate?
Send it send it to you. So how do I send it to you? I need your
Yeah, so I'll send you an email now. Do you have your town email handy?
Yeah, I do.
Jim, I could put it in the chat. Would that help?
So we do not have the chat feature here.
I don't see the chat.
Yeah, it's disabled. So actually, Julianne, what I'm gonna do is I'm just gonna send you the link. You can forward it over to him.
Or can you send it to me? Because I have his email up and ready to go, so.
Oh, good, okay. Sorry, everyone. And sorry, Jeffrey, who's waiting in the waiting room.
Unfortunately, unless he's watching YouTube, he cannot, he can't see or hear us right now. But yep, so you should be receiving that email.
I got it.
Yep. And then if you want to just let Paul know, it should be over momentarily.
I sent it.
Okay, should, would, do you think it's okay if we'd let Jeffrey in and make introductions at least?
Yeah, sure. You can say hello.
Hello.
Jeffrey.
My name is Julianne Hirsch, and with me tonight is Kristin Wickstead. We're both on the Board of Selectmen, and we have the task of interviewing all these fine candidates for the zoning board.
Great. Julianne, Kristin, it's good to meet you guys.
Hi. Thanks for waiting. We have the chair of the ZBA coming in, but he needed the Zoom link, so.
Okay.
So a little delay.
No worries.
Yeah, so we just figured we'd start off by saying hello and introducing ourselves, because we were gonna do that anyway.
Yeah, perfect.
So, yeah, and then we'll just give Paul a second to see if he's
So you're kind of new to town, huh, Jeffrey?
A little, yes, I am, yep. Just about, let's see, we moved there in November. Yeah, so pretty new.
There we go. Hi, Paul.
Hey, hey, how's it going? Sorry about that.
So we've already been introduced to Jeffrey. Jeffrey, Paul is the chairman of the zoning board of appeals, so.
Awesome.
He's going to fill in all the gaps of information.
Great.
So anyway, we had started to, you had started to say that you'd been here about eight months. Is that right?
Yeah, that's right, about eight months. I was in Boston for a few years prior to that, but I'm familiar with the area. I grew up in Sutton, so not too far away. So I got a job in Worcester and moved back to my roots. Have a little bit more space now.
Yeah. I bet.
Yeah, so now I've been liking it. And yeah, I actually moved to the corner of Whitney Street and where winter and rice are. And we bought this beautiful old house. And I was gonna get to this later, but speaking of zoning, I'm already becoming quite familiar with some zoning issues in town, because just last night, an Amazon truck was coming through Winter Street and took out my neighbor's rock wall.
Oh, my gosh.
And that happened, that same thing happened to us two months after we moved in, so I know that's a hot topic, you know, with the
Was it an 18-wheeler or a delivery truck?
I didn't see it. My neighbors saw it. I'm not sure. Yeah. But
I'm so sorry.
Oh, it's okay. Well, when it happened to us is, you know, too bad that happened, but I also realized how great, one, the town police were, and, two, the Department of Public Works came and rebuilt the wall for us about a week later. So that was nice.
That was really nice. Well, good. Welcome to town.
Yeah.
So, Kristin, did you want to start off?
Sure. Yeah, I just, I'll start off with my main question. Why have you applied to this particular board, and what do you think you will bring to it?
Sure. So having just moved to Northborough recently, I really want to become more involved in the community. And in law school, really, I got interested in zoning law and land use law. I take a lot of classes in those areas and did some internships that included aspects of zoning law and land use law. And so through that experience, you know, I also learned the, how significant the role is that ZBA plays in towns and kind of shaping the town and the direction that the town's going in. So just because of the significant nature of the board, I like to be a part of it. I think that's exciting. And just as a lawyer, I think it's a good fit for me, because I would come in with a knowledge of, to an extent, of how the sort of nitty-gritty and tedious laws that animate the zoning board work. And I think that, you know, that would give me a leg up and getting up to speed. And I think I'd be able to make some significant contributions after that because of that background. Well, now I do civil litigation at my law firm. Like I said, in law school, I did focus a lot on zoning law and land use law. So and I wanted to mention, too, after law school, I did spend a year clerking for an appeals court judge, and we had a couple appeals from zoning boards. So I kind of got to see the whole, well, that was the tail end of a zoning dispute.
Right. Yes. Okay, great. Thanks.
So Jeffrey, if anybody's watching on YouTube, they don't have access to your application. And one of the things that you mentioned in your application, which is pretty interesting, is you stated, "I'd like to have a part in the critical role that the ZBA plays in balancing the economic, historical, social, and other interests of the town." So this is a town that has some historical buildings and things like that. Have you had any experience in in kind of studying the benefits of historical, preserving historical things versus, you know, maybe more liberal laws? What, have you had anything like that come before you, or do you have any opinion on it?
I don't think I can, I don't think I have any practical experience to that, that I can speak on. However, you know, I'm just gonna talk from a really personal note here. I think, you know, my experience right now, we bought a house that was, is one of the historical gems, I think, and Northborough was built in, you know, pre-revolution. And, you know, a lot of the, we want to renovate it to an extent, but a lot of the decisions we're making are animated by our desire to to retain a lot of the historical qualities of the house. And I think that, you know, translates to, you know, a lot of the, you know, other houses, other buildings in town, whether that be, you know, if the town should try to buy certain properties as a way to better retain the historical qualities of the town. Yeah, so while I don't have, you know, any practical experience in that, I I think it's important to, I can absolutely see, see the benefit and the value in, in fostering and retaining the historical qualities of towns like Northborough. I mean, that's one of the reasons why I do love Northborough and Central Massachusetts in general, is because there's a lot of history here.
Yeah, I think your neighborhood has a few, a few of those gems, doesn't it?
Yeah, absolutely.
So Paul is here, and he's, he is going to just explain the schedule and how the, how the board runs. That's okay with you, Paul?
Yeah, sure. I mean, typically, our board is five regular members with one chair and a clerk, and then two alternates. We meet the fourth Tuesday of every month, usually except for April, which is, because town meeting usually falls around that time. And then I think typically we take December off, or we might schedule a meeting maybe a week or two before, if there are cases during that time. So figure roughly about 10 cases a year or so, or 10 meetings a year.
Could I quickly ask how the alternates come into play? Is that, are those positions used to help get new people the experience before they, you know, become a a non-alternate?
Yeah, it's a great question. I could, you know, I could speak from personal. You know, I started as an alternate on the ZBA, and I was an alternate for probably about two or three years, and then I became a regular member, but and there have been several people who have followed that same sort of pathway of starting as an alternate and then moving on. I mean, at least just from my own personal point of view, I don't have legal experience. I'm not a lawyer. I'm more on the finance trade of things. But, you know, being an alternate allowed me to sort of get, you know, real-world experience on the ZBA, but then also to attend a lot of CPDC classes that, you know, specifically were about variances and special permits and all of the stuff that we dealt with, and sort of gain that experience through attending those classes and obviously being an alternate on the ZBA.
Got it. Great.
I think we have one more minute, and if I might. Jeffrey, you, you suggested that it's, it's sometimes beneficial for a committee to have kind of rotating members and, you know, even so far as to have term limits. Would you, would you mind expanding on that a little bit?
Sure. I think my point in that answer is that I think to the best that you can. I think it's important to try to have a board that is representative of the town's population, and that town's population, you know, inevitably changes over time, and I know it has in Northborough. You know, and I understand that you can't force people to apply. But yeah, that's the point that I was trying to make. I think as much as the board can be as a representative of the community, the better, because then those populations will be represented in the perspectives that those different board members will bring, and, you know, their opinions as to the different decisions.
A great answer. And so, last question, unless you have questions for us. How did you find out about this opening? Is this is just kind of our, our own little personal research? Was it, did you go to the website?
Yeah. Well, at first, I think I went to the website, and I applied online for the position, as well as another one. But I think it was just before the annual town meeting, and it was probably a bad time to apply. And I don't know if it got lost in the shuffle or what. But then I think I saw on a Facebook page that maybe, maybe Diane posted that the, that the ZBA was hiring for an open spot, and that's when I reached out to her.
Oh. I'm sorry you got lost in the shuffle the first time. That's too bad.
It's okay.
You're a really good candidate, and oh, I had another question in here. Oh, what was the other board you applied for?
It was the municipal bylaw and code.
Oh, wow. Okay.
I figured, I figured that was
That seems so hard to me, and that would not be my thing, but I really applaud people who apply for that, so.
Yeah. I figured it was kind of up my alley as well, so.
As a lawyer, yeah, yeah, I could see that.
Yeah. So I'll follow, if, you know, if this doesn't work out, I'll follow up and see if there's still a spot with that one.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeffrey.
Do you have any questions for us before we, before we admit the next candidate?
Nope, I don't think so.
It was really nice meeting you.
It was nice meeting you, and we're going to be voting on this at our next select board meeting, which won't be till July 18.
Okay, good. Thank you so much, guys. Appreciate it.
Nice to meet you.
Welcome.
Thanks.
Thanks.
All right, he got himself out. I didn't have to do that for him. All right, so we have Tim Kalam next.
Right.
So I will admit him. Hi, Tim.
Who are you?
Hi, Tim. Do you know everyone here? Do you know Paul?
Yeah, Paul and I have met.
Oh, good. Okay. All right, so welcome to the, to the interview subcommittee. Kristin, did you want to start off?
Um, yes. So I just want to ask everybody, why have you applied to this particular board, and what do you think you bring to it?
I've applied to this board because I think it's important for people that serve on boards and committees in town to not have any biases, to be, to be open to representing the entire community and making decisions that are in the best interest of the community. And I thought that was would be helpful on the ZBA.
Okay. So, so, Tim, I think you probably know that the public doesn't have their, your application in front of them. And I was just gonna ask you to expand on a couple of the things that you wrote. One of them was your answer to, why did you want to serve? You, you said, "The ZBA needs people who will make decisions that are in the best interest of the entire community. I feel I have demonstrated that while on the BOS." Is there a specific example that comes to mind that, that you could tell us about?
Um, well, I, I think creating and implementing the diversity and inclusion committee is a pretty good example. That was, you know, that was a committee that did not exist, and based on feedback and from the community, thought it was something that was needed and would be great for the community to be involved in.
Excellent. Um, okay, so the, how do you feel the, the master plan, which was written a couple of years ago, should be considered in zoning decisions, if it should, if it should be considered at all?
Well, it certainly should be considered. Probably serve as a guideline. There's, there's a number of different factors that go into, obviously, the decision-making on the ZBA, bylaws, master plan, legal, in the context for which each decision and the facts going around that decision. So, but it certainly should be part of the decision-making process.
Uh huh. Um, at this point, I think we're gonna ask Paul to just tell you about the schedule. You probably know a lot about it, but just the time commitment and, and also, you know, how, any kind of training that's available to you?
All right, perfect.
Uh, yeah, so I mean, I guess, you probably already know this, but, you know, ZBA has made up of five regular members and two alternates. And we meet roughly 10 times a year, usually on the fourth Tuesday of the month. You know, typically, the last several people that have come onto the board have started as alternates and come on as regular members, myself included. You know, we, I know myself and Brad, and I believe Suci and a couple others have attended CPDC training sessions, on-demand trainings, county annual conferences, stuff like that, just to sort of get up to speed on variances and special permits and all the things that go into helping us make proper and correct decisions.
Gotcha. Yeah, 10, 10's actually less than what we have had for the Board of Selectmen, so that, that's easy to manage.
Yeah, 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 sure.
Did you have any other questions, Tim, or Paul in particular, since he's the expert?
No, nothing, nothing comes to mind. I mean, I served as a liaison for the ZBA back, you know, a number of years ago, so I'm pretty familiar with the operations and the type of decisions and, and things that come before the ZBA, so.
So we have a few minutes. Maybe we can get a little deeper into the conversation. One of the questions that, that was suggested to me was to ask, "If you are in a position of having to make a decision about a bylaw, what are some of the things you would consider or use in your thought process?" For example, would you weigh, how would you weigh the bylaw, vis a vis the applicant, the abutters, the neighborhood, the master plan, the town?
I think, and Paul probably can attest to this, too, I, I think that's difficult to say without knowing the context and what variables are involved with the case, because they're, they're all gonna be different. I think you do need to follow the bylaws, but you also need, you need to consider the abutters, you need to consider what the master plan is, you need to consider what the actual impact on the community will be, both pros and cons, economic impacts. So there's, there's a number of different variables that you need to take into account before saying one is more important than the others, or what your decision-making process would be.
But, but so I think what you're saying is you would consider all of the above and maybe even more in all decisions?
Correct.
Okay. And you have something interesting on your CV. Creatively solving complex problems. Would you, would you just tell us about a skill set that you've developed that helps you solve problems in a creative manner? Something we can all learn from tonight.
I have worked with startups and small businesses for 20-plus years and have built a number of very, very successful companies. And with each company, there comes a unique set of problems, whether it's management, financial, geez, any, any, anything that falls under the umbrella of a, of a business. And having to solve those problems, sometimes when you're short on resources, you, you just need to be creative.
Dig deep, huh? Well, thank you so much for coming tonight. Kristin, do you have any other questions or?
No, I'm all set.
Paul?
Almost it.
Tim, do you have any questions for us?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you so much for applying.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Good to see you, Paul.
Um, just for the, the people who are interviewing, I have, I, my agenda said Kevin Wersh is next. Does anybody?
Yeah, that's what I have, too. And I don't have him here yet. But we are exactly on time. So Dick Rand seems to be in the waiting room, but he came in right at 5:30 or as soon as the meeting started, he was in. So I don't know if he just wanted to log in so he could just
Yeah, maybe.
Ready and not have to worry about getting in later. But we, we don't have Kevin yet, so I don't want to surprise Dick by being like, hey.
Yeah, no, 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 no.
You know, so maybe we just give Kevin a minute.
Absolutely.
Mind if I just go grab him just a quick glass of water?
Yeah, sure. There we go. Oh, it's this conference board, but that's probably him, but, oh. It keeps reminding us that Dick is in the waiting room, too, which is funny. It's like Zoom doesn't want us to forget him, but we're not.
Being host is keeping me on time also.
Yeah, good, good.
Oh, here we are. Kevin's here.
Is that Kevin?
How are you?
Hi, Kevin. Your name is not Kevin on the thing.
I know, I'm working on it. Give me a second.
No problem.
This is
Paul needed a glass of water anyway, so.
Okay.
Well, Kevin, thanks for coming back.
Absolutely. Thanks for having me back.
New, new group?
Yes.
Okay.
So you know a little bit about how this, this runs?
Julianne, just to introduce ourselves, like, because it was a different interview committee last time, so it's, I'm Kristin Wickstead, and that's Julianne Hirsch, and then Paul Tagliaferro is now the chair of the ZBA.
Nice to meet you all officially.
Yeah. Okay.
And Kristin has been starting off the interview?
Yeah, so I have a question I've been asking everyone. Why have you applied to this particular board, and what do you bring to it? I realize you've probably already said this, and we appreciate you doing it again.
Okay, sure. So just, you know, thank you again for having me here today. My name's Kevin Veers. I'm a, you know, resident in Northborough. I've been living here for just over 14 years now. And my sort of professional background is an architect. I'm a principal at a firm in downtown. We're a 50-person firm, where I'm part of the leadership at our firm, and really enjoy the profession and very much see the benefits that, you know, architecture can do for a community and for people that live within it. And so I see this as kind of as an opportunity to kind of blend my, my, my home life and my participation in Northborough as a community with my professional life. So, you know, I very much enjoy kind of, you know, thinking about things, unraveling challenges, working through, you know, elements that require some thought, and this is, this is my language, you know, it's sort of, you know, my wheelhouse, if you will. Just a lot of things that get talked about at ZBA meetings. And I've actually had the opportunity to listen in on the last one. These are all kind of topics and discussion elements that I deal with on a professional level quite frequently. So I feel like I'm, you know, very qualified to participate in the ZBA, and I'm excited to be able to give back to my community.
So, but Kevin, could you, your, your application states that you've done a lot of healthcare facilities, correct?
Yeah, the, my, my, the firm I work for does do a lot of healthcare, as well as academic life science. Earlier on in my career, I did work on many residential projects as well. The thing with The thing with a lot of these projects, um, you know, healthcare specifically, is we do focus a lot on, um, community-based health centers and senior living-type facilities, um, where, um, we do, not often, not every project, but do frequently, um, you know, present our work to community boards, or planning departments, or zoning Board of Appeals, um, in an effort to, you know, help our client, um, move forward with a project that they're interested in doing.
So you have years of experience with this. What have you learned along the way to, to, uh, bring a project from, you know, the desk to the community and have everybody buy in?
Um, yeah, I think, um, so I've been very fortunate in that the projects I've worked on are ones that are, um, generally positive for the community. So, um, you know, quite honestly, it's, it hasn't been that difficult. But, um, you know, I think early colla- early buy-in on a process, early collaboration and sharing, and, um, expressing kind of the vision and the benefits that something can have for a community with those stakeholders that are interested in learning about it, is always, um, the most like beneficial way to move forward.
Interesting, um.
Um, Julianne, I have a question actually that, um, didn't really apply to the first two, but it does to Kevin. Um, so can I ask it now?
Oh, please.
So, um, I'm, I'm sorry, our application needs to be updated. Um, there's nowhere to put, uh, or no clear spot to put, um, what kind of volunteering have you done for the community of Northborough that isn't a board or a committee? And if that were the case, I would, uh, for me, and I had to fill out that application to be on the Board of Selectmen, I never would have made it, because that was all I ever did. I never did boards and committees, I did lots of things with the schools and with other groups, so, um, are you, you wanna weigh in on that?
Um, absolutely, yeah. I mean, the, the one that just pops up to mind is I've, I've been the soccer coach for two of my kids for many years now, all the way from, um, gosh, I can't remember what it's called, but the, the rec has a, has a soccer thing for like, you know, four-year-olds, um, or three-year-olds even. So, sort of from three to, he's ten now, so I guess for that child, I've been, uh, you know, helping him with soccer for like seven years now, and then I've been on the NYSA for maybe four or five years now, doing soccer for my third son, um. So definitely involved in that, um, and then, yeah, I guess that's the biggest one. I mean, there's other things I've helped in a little bit, um, you know, participated in like the October Halloween carving, um, thing that was happening and attending, you know, the Christmas tree lighting, and my wife's very involved in her, in, in the PTA at her school, at, at our children's school. Um, and I go with her whenever there's a thing, and I volunteer at, you know, to collect the cash or to help at the bouncy, um.
Whatever she tells you to do.
Yeah, well, that's a good way of putting it, sure, yep. I, I, I help with the collaborative effort of doing the right thing, yep.
Awesome, okay, that's great, thanks.
Kevin, I, I don't know if you've had a chance to, um, to look at the master plan, but I'm sure you're familiar that towns have to do this on a regular basis. How, how would that, um, co- co- factor into your, your thought process about any zoning decisions? Maybe it wouldn't, maybe it would? Do you have any opinion about that?
Um, yeah, I mean, I think it's, I think the answer is yes, it should, um. If, you know, the, the master plan has been developed to create kind of a vision for the growth of the community and the town. And that's one that zoning appeals decisions should likely, possibly, um, lean towards sort of helping fulfill that bigger-picture goal. Um, so yes, I think they would influence it.
Um, i- in case you haven't had a chance, the, um, the Master Plan Implementation Committee is already underway, and we're working very, very hard to get to focus on downtown, 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 so. Pretty exciting times in Northborough these days.
Right, right.
Um, okay, next question, if you, if you don't mind, we have a few minutes, right? Um, if, if you had to make a decision, um, about a zoning bylaw, what are some of the things that you would consider or use in your thought process? For example, how do you weigh the bylaw, vis a vis the, the applicant, the butters, the neighborhood? Um, all, would, would you consider all of them? Do you, you know, do you think that it's most important to just focus on the bylaw? How, how do you think you might approach something like that?
Um, yeah, so these are kinds of, um, thought processes that we, we often have as architects, because we are, um, you know, we're driven to follow multiple sort of, um, influences in a way, um, and that can be building codes, um, Department of Public Health requirements, um, other codes such as life safety codes, or, um, you know, something leaving like an electric code. Um, then you have that weighing against, um, the client's desires and wishes and what they wanna see, um. So oftentimes, um, it's, it's really a balancing act between multiple influences. So, the goal here though is to do the right thing, and you have to have some professional and personal moral judgment to make those decisions. And I think when you're, when you're looking at topics that may come up through a ZBA appeal, um, you have to do a similar sort of thing, where you're trying to balance, hey, well, the zoning code says, um, you know, my sign has to be X feet tall, it can only be X feet tall, and then someone's asking for a higher sign, and you have to, you know, sort of weigh the pros and cons and the benefits of what it can do, um, you know, by diverging from the, the specific regulation. And, you know, if one of the influences is, well, that may affect the neighbor, or that, you know, improves another element, um, those are things you have to balance and come up with sort of what feels like the right decision.
Thank you. Um, Paul, do you have any questions for, for Kevin, or did you, uh, Kevin, I think you, you probably heard the whole schedule and, um, meeting kind of uh, uh, how meetings go, correct, or?
Yes, I think so.
But Paul, if you have any questions, or, um, anything to add?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Kevin, do you have any questions for us?
Um, no, I'm just, you know, real excited, and it's, it's great hearing kind of a new round of questions from this group, um, a little different from the last one, um, so that was great, um.
Keep you on your toes.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Keep you on your toes.
That's right, oh, yeah, I, I should. I, I wasn't that prepared for the last one, so, um, I figured I would, you know, just do my best today as well, um. But, you know, thank you very much, um, one of the things-
It was a great answer, it was, it's, it's not, it, it, it's not meant to be a trick question, I just, you know, it's a, a little bit of it is curiosity on, on how you do put all those things together, it's, it's a pretty, it's, as, as, uh, you know, as candidates know, this is a very important board, and it has long-reaching effects. So, it's, and it's not all black and white, right?
Yeah, I mean, I would just, you know, whether I'm appointed or not, I just, you know, very much appreciate your efforts and your work, and I would just, sort of the last thing I would leave is, leave with, is that, um, I would just recommend that boards like this generally kind of come up with a, a, a list of actual, um, you know, criteria to be potentially nominated, I think that's, or, or selected. Um, I think that's, that's really important, um, having, you know, actual metrics to be able to help you folks make your decisions seems like it would, um, help make this process much more linear, and allow people who are applying realize if they um, are a good fit, and then allow you to make better decisions based on, you know, defined criteria, and do people meet these metrics, and I, I think that would be a, a great thing to consider in the future.
You're speaking to Kristin, who is, who is advocating for, um, for a little bit of a, a change in, in the application process.
Okay.
Kristin?
Yeah, no, I, I agree, especially with, um, certain boards that we can have more defined criteria, I think that's really good. Also, um, I, I'm a writer and an editor, and I can't wait to get my hands on the application and just do my thing to it.
And, and Kevin, Kristin and I are just a little curious about how you did find out about the position. We're wondering, um, how, you know, how to get this information out to the town, uh, and may, it, it might not need to get out more, but, um, was it web, was the town website, was it Facebook, was it a friend?
Yeah, it was just, uh, word of mouth, um, that was it, um, you know, friend of a friend, hey, you're an architect, you're involved in town, would you be interested, um, in running for this position, that's it. I mean, I would say that more advertising would, would make sense, that would be something I think the group should consider.
Thank you so much for your, for your helpful comments, too.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay.
That's hot, okay.
Yep, you're all set, thanks, Kevin.
Bye.
You know that, um, that we decided to group on the eighteenth, on the eighteenth of July, okay?
Okay.
All right.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, so I'm confused here, we have a phone number, and then we have Dick still, and then we have now Suzie, so I'm just leaning towards-
Suzie next.
Admitting, yeah, Suzie's next, but I'm thinking we just admit Suzie, and then I don't know who's on the phone.
Does the phone number end in two-seven-four?
No. No, five-oh-three, so, so yeah.
And I believe we're not, we're not missing any applicants, correct?
No, so who is that?
Yeah, I, I don't know who the phone number is, and I, I would ignore that. Um, I would go on and, and go with Suzie, and then Dick as, uh, scheduled, um, on the agenda.
Okay. Thanks, Jim. All right, good, well, I'm glad Suzie's not gonna be on the phone, that was what I was thinking, she was using someone else's phone or something, um.
Oh, I see what you mean, okay.
Yeah, but it isn't, because now she's trying to get in, so should it, are you ready? We're a couple minutes early, but that's okay. I, I kind of rushed Tim off, thinking that it was fi- a ten-minute interview like last time, but it's a fifteen, or at least the, they're fifteen minutes apart. So I was rushing him off, thinking we had somebody right away, and, and that's why Kevin wasn't late, he was right on time. I was just, I didn't look at the agenda clearly, quite carefully enough.
I, I, it is fifteen minutes, right?
Yeah, so Suzie's technically not supposed to be here till six-fifteen, but I mean, she's here and we're here, so we could start.
Okay.
And if she's not actually like, ready, ready, that's okay, we'll give her a minute. Oh, here she is. Hello? We can't hear you.
Am I unmuted now?
There, yep.
Thank you.
Driving around, are you at soccer, baseball, or something?
I'm at baseball right now.
Yeah.
We're losing, um, six-nothing first inning, so this is a nice, um.
A nice retreat. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Hopefully some good stuff will happen while you're interviewing.
And then I won't be able to go back.
You know, all of, I, I, you know, you know me, do you know Paul?
I do know Paul, I'm on the ZBA with him right now.
Of course, of course, okay.
Yeah.
So no introductions needed. All right, so Kristin's starting off with the standard question.
Yes, so Suzie, um, tell us why you are applying to this particular board, and what do you think you will bring to it?
So, um, I have a skillset that matched from my previous life, where I was a real estate attorney, I practiced corporate real estate, um, corporate law, residential real estate, title insurance, um, zoning and municipality representation. Um, I actually helped rewrite, um, a zoning code in the town of Tully, New York, um, in my past lifetime. And, um, I have a particular skillset, I'm a not-practicing attorney now, but I feel like I have these skills, and I love to volunteer and help the town, so I applied to the ZBA. I am currently the alternate to the alternate, which is an official title. And, um, I wanted to, after my interview and, um, seeing the previous interview committee discuss it before, um, I saw that it was kind of a requirement for some on the board that you have experience on this particular zoning board. So, um, I've been on the zoning board for over a year now, and I would like to be able to vote on everything that I can.
Excellent. So, Su- Suzie, could you, um, go into a little more, um, you mentioned, uh, and from the way I understand your application reads and what you said, you've, you've kind of, as a, as a lawyer, you, uh, did experience like both sides, the municipal side as well as the developer side, the residence, residential side, um. Could you, could you go into that a little bit more, and how that's helped you as you analyze some of the problems that came before you?
Well, I al- I already have the basic knowledge of, um, some of the stuff, and know how to read a bylaw and the application and the plans. Um, even now, I'm one, I'm one of the paper people, I like to say, I, uh, I always pick everything up, because I like to really pour over everything, um. I have applications in the car for, for tonight's meeting, actually. Um, it just gave me an, a, a basis of knowledge. Um, but understanding that, if you've ever watched one of my zoning board meetings, I do like to ask questions that I feel like people that are sitting and watching in the public, because I am representing the public and not just, um, a former real estate attorney. Um, I try to ask questions that I feel like somebody that doesn't have my knowledge always wanna know the answers to, or perhaps would show the applicant, um, something about our process or how we apply bylaws as well. Um, so I'm not only analyzing it, but I'm trying to, um, get to that underlying, um, information, trying to spread the information to everybody as well.
Um, so I, I assume you're aware that we are, we have completed a master plan, and we're in the implementation process. Could you speak to how you think your role on the zoning board is, is affected by that, or, um, or how that would can enter into your thought process? Would it, maybe it shouldn't?
Um, I mean, knowing that the town has goals, it really does, it can affect on how you're gonna interpret something, or how you're gonna vote. I try to apply the rules as they stand, and I like to see the new, um, bylaws that are being brought forth. Um, I was kind of disappointed at the annual town meeting that some of them were not passed, because I think that they are needed. Um, and I have attended all the master plan meetings that I could from the very beginning, when we were just doing the brainstorming. Um, I'm very excited about what it could mean for our town, and how it can affect the decisions going forward.
Kristin, do you have any further questions?
Um, so maybe in this case, we ask that question that I told you wasn't appropriate for people, if they didn't know it was coming, um, about the zoning. Is it zoning laws in town, and are there any that you know of that are, um, I don't know, might need to be updated, I think, was the question, and I said that wasn't a fair question to ask people if they didn't know it was coming, and they didn't do the homework for it, but since you've been going to ZBA meetings for a year, do you do you have any ideas about that?
Well, I mean, one of them that I thought, um, that I really wish was passed was, for example, the signage. Um, the signage for the downtown area, and the downtown area being that small area, because it was something that the master plan, and even in that first session, people want something looking uniform, and they, you know, they don't want the backlit signs, and um, I just, I didn't understand why people would vote against it, um. I mean, everyone's entitled to their vote, but that was something that came out early in the master plan implementation. Um, also the warehouses, there's a lot going on with the warehouse issues and the zoning, and that's starting to come up, that comes up, you know, case by case for us as well. Um, so that was something else that I, I really wish was- so that was something else that I, I really wish was added. I don't think the zoning bylaws always have to be no, 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 but they give room to grow and to change and to slowly change. So, um, that's, that's how I look at it with the interpretation. Um, I don't, like an applicant, applicant comes before us. I don't think of it as like breaking a bylaw. Um, we try to make things work, but if they don't work, they just don't work, you know? And I feel bad if people have put a lot of money into hoping that it would work, but, um, it's kind of, you know, that's what we're given all the time. So I would have liked to see that those things were passed.
Could, could you tell us a little bit about the process that you just mentioned, um, in the, the town in ups, I guess it was upstate New York about rewriting the bylaws? Like what, why did the town decide to do that?
Um, well, so the town of Tully is basically, um, was a, a farming town and it's a lot different there because it's very sparsely populated. So I could say that it was like Northborough, but it's never had as many people as Northborough. Um, but as, you know, like as we have seen in our own town, these farms and wineries, there's a lot of wineries in that area um, have come forward. The people on the board, the town, you know, the town board and the, um, the zoning board, I don't even remember if they had a planning as this was probably about fifteen years ago. Um, they wanted to update things. They didn't want to be just a farming town. So they wanted to change things so that on an old farm, they could have a brewery or a winery breweries weren't really the things back then, but the winery, um, and the, you know, the tasting rooms and things like that. So we just, we updated that. Um, also I remember, I think it was something about the downtown, like even people adding pools and fences and garages, like those were outdated, um, for the time as well. So it was, we just, we overhauled it. We went part by part and looked for updating, updated things and I would send them the draft and they would vote on it. You know, it's kind of a different process. We don't have annual town meetings there and stuff. But, um, that's basically what we did. We just updated it for them. And if you look up the Finger Lakes area, it's, you know, it's a gorgeous area and, and all those little towns have had to like move forward to become profitable and to keep their residents there and have these amazing little downtowns that, you know, look like they're out of a, a movie, basically, but.
So you were basically a consultant then or a, a member of the town?
We, so our law firm represented, um, several municipalities because they were so small that, um, you just, we were like, we were one village and then, you know, thirty miles away, we were another town and, you know, ten miles another way, we were in other towns. But we represented the village of Phoenix, um, the village of North Syracuse, the town of Tully. I'm sure there was another one. Um, but those are the ones that I mostly work on.
So looking into the future, because people have been commenting to me about this, um, it, it seems that, uh, we're going to have to move into a little bit more of a cooperative, regionalized kind of, um, relationship with towns. Do you have any thoughts about that at all?
Um, I do. I attended some of the central Massachusetts planning meetings in relationship to the warehouses and traffic safety, which is another passion of mine in town. Um, and I feel like we all have to work together because, you know, the, between the, that, um, the four ninety-five corridor and we're becoming, you know, and Worcester's growing and improving like so much. So between the Woodstock and that whole downtown area, it's changed so much over the last ten years. Um, people want to look like Hudson. Um, there's no reason why we shouldn't be capitalizing on what we have to offer. We have a lot to offer. The bones are there. We just need to, you know, go forward with it, I think.
Um, Paul, by any selection, do you have any questions? I, I know you have served on the board together. So, um, if you have anything you want to say.
As it go on, let's see in thirty-five minutes. Uh, no, I don't have any questions for Suzie.
Kristen, anything further?
No, I don't think so. And I think Suzie knows enough about how the board operates that, um, yeah. We don't need to go into any more detail. So if you, unless you have questions for us, um, we're going to be voting on July eighteenth at our Board of Selectmen meeting.
And one question we have asked everyone, and maybe you have, you could just comment on it, um, because it doesn't really pertain to how you found out about the position, but we are asking how people find out about the openings up for volunteer positions. Um, do you have any comments or thoughts about that?
Oh, being on a couple of different boards, I think, um, that advertising, I would love, it's very confusing to go on the board and committee and commission website and to find out where there's an open position and to get to the application. I had a friend, um, actually printed out for me. Um, we, we don't have a working printer in my home and I had COVID a couple of weeks ago and my husband was working from home. So he couldn't print it out. I had a friend print out the application as big as in my mailbox for me because I just couldn't even, I was having problems doing it online and everything. I think if we had a cohesive page where maybe it was, um, openings or apply here or even attend these meetings, they have public comment or looking for public input, um, that would be great. Like community affairs. We have a board of nine that votes on everything, but the more the merrier is, the better ideas, the more connections, um, you know, stuff like that. So that, I would love to see like a, just a page for that and maybe even, or maybe like the board openings, but then also a volunteer is needed. Cause I've had people approach me and say, where can I volunteer? And I'm like, I, I don't really know. If the food pantry needs anybody or, you know, where you could post your volunteer opening.
Yes. Well, thank you for that. Those are some really good suggestions and, um, if, uh, I hope that when you get back to the game, things have changed a little bit. So.
Well, tune, tune in in thirty-five minutes and perhaps there will be a score update. Chair, if the chair so deems it during my introduction, I shall give you the new score.
Thank you so much, Suzie.
Thank you.
Bye.
Have a good night. Bye.
Paul, you have a meeting tonight?
Yeah, we have a meeting at seven o'clock tonight.
Whoa, okay. Well, we better.
Finish up. All right. Should I admit Dick? He's been here for almost an hour.
Yeah.
Okay. Hello? Are you there, Dick?
Should I admit him too? No, he's admitted.
He's admitted. Um, so I guess we wait and see if he unmutes. Can you unmute and make your video work? Um.
So I sent him a, um, an ask to unmute, um, which sends him a prompt. Uh, what I am maybe thinking is he, he could have been calling in on the phone and sometimes Zoom does weird things and if you close the screen, oh, there he is.
Whoa.
There you are. Hi.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Pretty good. Um, I, I don't know if we've actually ever formally met. My name is Julianne Hirsch. I'm on the Board of Selectmen and this I have with me Kristen Wickstead. We're serving on the interview committee, a new committee. This calendar year, so, um, not calendar year, but fiscal year. So, um, welcome and thank you for all of your service on the, on the zoning board. Um, Kristen is starting off the interview with a standard question and then we'll get a little bit into your application.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Hi. Okay. So well, the, the standard question is why have you applied to this particular board and what do you bring to it? And I feel like I already know the answer for you because I read your application. So my question, I'm going to, um, switch it up a little bit for you. Uh, I noticed on your application that you only wrote zoning board of appeals under what boards and committees and, you know, volunteer work you've done in Northborough. So but you've been on this committee for twenty, what year, twenty-one, twenty-three?
Twenty-three.
Years. So, um, so two parts to that. Is there anything else that you would like to talk about that you've been doing in Northborough during that time? And, uh, why do you, why have you stayed on the ZBA for so long and why do you want to continue doing it?
I think it's an important function in the town. It's a government agency that needs to be, uh, oversee the zoning and whether it's uh, business, industrial, residential, uh, this zoning has been laid out and the zoning board of appeals gets to, you know, hear different things that, uh, special permits and variants that people want and make judgments on those. And I think it's a very important board and, uh, I had a lot of interest when I joined. I didn't know how this only board of appeals worked and I thought it was fascinating that they could do some of the things they did. And I went on the board and I learned, uh, I've learned a lot about zoning and how it operates. The people who are on the board were excellent at the time. Bill Rostam was the chairman and, uh, he was, um, wealth of knowledge and a, a great source of information and he, he was a great educator. So, uh, I learned a lot about it and I'm very, still am very interested in it.
Okay. And, um, Julianne, I was just going to follow up with a quick thing. So, um, so can you be more specific? Um, what particular, you said the ZBA, I guess, to decide on some pretty significant things? Can you just, um, mention a couple of those? I don't, I don't really know a ton about the ZBA myself, so I'm, I'm also learning.
ZBA is established by the state, by, you know, general laws and each city in town has a zoning board of appeals. And by statute, they are allowed to make, uh, big changes for variances that people apply for. And it's for various reasons and particularly if there's some type of hardship that the zoning, uh, causes a person or they think it causes them and they, they bring it to the zoning board of appeals and try and get a variance so that they can do whatever they want to do. But sometimes it's reasonable, sometimes it's, it's logical and sometimes it's just, uh, somebody trying to push the envelope and get more than what the zoning provides. And so, I mean, that's what the zoning board of appeals does. And here's those variances. And we also have, uh, different applications for special permits. A lot of the zoning bylaws, particularly in the industrial and business sections in Northborough, they need a special permit to open and, uh, the zoning board of appeals is the hearing agency that listens to those special permits and, and grants them. And we also have youth variances that have been, it can be granted. Uh, the zoning section of town has, uh, certain uses that can, particularly in the business and industrial areas. We have certain uses of businesses that can go in those areas. And sometimes it's not enough to get it correctly or there's new, new types of business because these laws were, and zoning bylaws were made twenty, thirty, forty years ago and it is new businesses, new types of businesses, whether they're computers or distribution centers or whatever they are, you know, bylaws, I keep it up with them on a daily basis. And, you know, that's the basis of this only board of appeals to hear those things and, and decide whether they should be allowed as a youth variance in these particular areas. And there are some people, like I said, there's people who come in for youth variances in a residential neighborhood that, you know, presidential neighborhoods need to be preserved and then they need to, to have their privacy as much as possible. And, you know, the zoning board of appeals hears those issues and makes, I think, the best decisions for the good of the town.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
So you mentioned that, um, that you've been on for twenty-three years and that you, you got a good foundation early on from your chairperson. Um, is that, is that primarily where you got your training or have you attended classes along the way?
Attended classes along the way and, uh, I, I read a lot of the zoning terms that the court comes down with and, and, you know, I try to stay up to date with it.
Okay. Um, and having been on the board for so long, have you noticed changes, um, in the board or in the, the direction the town is taking? Can you comment on any of the changes that have affected your role on the zoning board?
Well, the zoning, uh, since about twelve years ago, the, the zoning board and the planning board, there were almost the zoning bylaws. I mean, you know, made recommendations to the town and it heard a town meeting and, uh, you know, those changes have been made law or as bylaws within the town. And, uh, I mean, there's been a lot of changes as time goes on. Different people want different things and, uh, different neighborhoods being together and they, they want particular things, uh, particular neighborhoods that are around business zones or around industrial zones. Um, you know, the, they typically think that, you know, there, there's a, uh, there's room for discretion about whether businesses come into these industrial business areas. And, uh, you know, typically there isn't. The town has voted what are business areas, what are industrial areas and, you know, the zoning board of appeals and has to go along with what the town has voted on.
Um, and, and I'm not sure if you've had a chance to read the master plan or have followed it, but, um, how do you think a master plan, uh, should it affect, should it be part of your decision-making process as you're looking at certain decisions? Or maybe not? Uh, do you have any opinion on that?
I think the master plan is important for town planning, but, you know, planning new bylaws that, you know, have come up. Like I said, you know, the zoning gets outdated as time goes on, different things happen, different things occur and, you know, the master plan is probably fifteen years old, twenty years old and it needs to be updated. We, we've got the most recent one and those issues that have come up have to be addressed by the town and whether or not, you know, the townspeople want to vote to have them new bylaws and then different districts changed. And that's up to the planning board to make those recommendations and to get those in codified into bylaws so that they can be upheld. All right. Right now, you know, the master plan is not a law that has to be observed by the zoning board of appeals. It's the wish list that the town has put together and it needs to be implemented into certain bylaws that address the issues that come up in the master plan.
Um, Paul, do you have any comments or questions?
Uh, no questions. How's it going, Dick? How are you doing? Doing good.
Well, I understand that you gentlemen have a, um, have a meeting coming up. So Kristen, if you have any other questions?
Uh, no, no, I, I don't want to keep him. I, yeah, you have another meeting right at seven, right, Dick?
I don't have any meeting.
Oh, I thought it was a ZBA meeting. Oh.
I'm not on it.
Oh, right. Sorry.
So you understand that.
Middle ground right now. Okay.
Okay.
And, and, and our next meeting, our next Board of Selectmen meeting is on July eighteenth, where we'll, we'll, um, we'll vote again and hopefully, um, you know, come to a, a decision in July. But thank you so much for coming tonight and thank you. Certainly thank you for twenty-three years of service on this board.
Yes, thank you for all that time and all those hours of meetings.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Good night.
So Kristen, we have to approve the minutes. Um, can you make the motion? The July.
I moved to, oh, sorry.
Wait, do you have the date on those minutes?
No, let me, let me look that up. That's important.
I think it was June eighth.
I think it's in like, yeah, sorry. Paul, you can go, I think, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It's up to you. Uh, I mean, our meeting doesn't start for twenty minutes, but I'm, I'm good. If you guys, if you guys don't need me anymore, then.
Yeah.
I'll have to drop.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, great. Thank you very much. And, uh, you guys have a good night and, uh, good luck with your decision.
Thank you. Not easy.
Bye.
Bye.
Okay. It was June seventh.
Okay.
So if you could make the motion.
So, um, I moved to approve the meeting minutes from June seventh, twenty twenty-two.
Um, um, all those that, are, are you in favor of approving?
I am. I.
And I vote aye. And I vote I. The minutes are approved. Okay, so now we have to deliberate and
We had, we had some really good candidates and it's really frustrating. There's only one spot available.
What's your first impression?
Well, I mean, there is one way to make it two spots, which would be to do the traditional ZBA thing and promote Suzie to the board and then there would be an opening for the alternate. And that's the only way to make it two spots. But before we talk about that, we should probably talk a little bit about each candidate, should we?
Yep.
Um, so I'll start with, with Jeff. So I was very impressed with him. I thought he was really, really smart, like a really smart bunch of people, actually, all of them. And I thought it was really interesting that he has an older home because I also have an older home. I hope the noise in the background isn't bothering you. Can you hear it?
No, I can't even hear it.
I'm at my mom's house, so she has the TV on the other one. But he, he has a lot of interesting things to say besides just his legal experience doing a certain amount of land use law while he was in law school, it looks like, and his, in his clerkship. But it's just, it seems like an interest of his, which is really important, you know? I think it's really important to have people who really have been following this kind of thing for a while and are sort of fascinated by zoning laws. So what would you like to add about him? Anything?
Um, well, clearly he is, he has the background, the educational background, the interest. He, he is new in town and not necessarily that that's a negative, but I think that he's, he's willing to, you know, to entertain the idea of joining some other committees to start getting involved. So he, that's, that's my only, that's my only additional comment on Jeffrey.
Yes, right. Okay, and then Tim says he would bring to this board that he wouldn't have biases. And he certainly has a lot of experience on town boards on three that I can think of that were on his application and also that I know of. But, but he doesn't really have any zoning experience. He's more of a finance guy and an operations guy. I read his resume very carefully and did some research on him just because I didn't know what he does. And it seems like he he has a lot to do with streamlining and operating and improving the way people are doing things. Nothing really about zoning, so I would say that was his weakness there. He doesn't really have any experience with zoning or really.
Right, any legal background, any-
Architecture.
Higher experience, right, right, right. And, and I think also, you know, we have, we have heard from the people in town that we should, we should kind of spread the wealth. Tim is on a very important committee, which is appropriations.
Yeah.
Right?
Yep.
And, and I think that's something to be mindful of, you know, not to keep putting the same players into multiple positions.
That actually, that's a really big, that's a big issue for me. I forgot appropriations was one of his committees, yeah. And but that is a really important one and so is ZBA. And I personally think that it, one of the best things about me being on the select board is that I came from not a board or a committee. I wasn't important, important in town at all. I was just a mom who volunteered a lot at the library at Peaslee and with the PTO and with the NSMA. That's the music association at the high school. You probably wouldn't know that. And I I think, and, and just in some other ways in the community. And so I bring a perspective of someone who wants to get involved in town politics and doesn't have any connections, right, or didn't. And I think it's important to remember that these three out of, well, I guess two out of five of these people are really kind of throwing their hat in the ring in a similar way to the way I did, which I really appreciate. It's not easy.
It's not easy. You're absolutely right, yeah.
Yeah, and then we have like Suzie and Tim who are both involved in other things in town, but the other, one of Suzie's other things is already the ZBA. Right? So I'm just gonna jump to her for one sec because I already brought her up. But she does have so much good experience. I remember when she applied the first time, I really thought she should have been picked that time. And because she's just extremely qualified. And I was glad at least they made her the alternate that time. I wasn't on the board then. But I was glad she was at least chosen to be an alternate. And and there is this culture of sort of promoting people from being an alternate. So that's definitely something I'm seriously considering. Do you want to add anything about Suzie?
Um, I, you know, I was so impressed with her with her candidness and her kind of, kind of vision. And, you know, just, just the fact that she that she was disappointed in some of the votes that happened at town meeting. Because, you know, the vote, the vote was tricky. It had to be a two-thirds vote. And, you know, a majority of town voted for some of the things that she supported. And I was really, I was very impressed at how frank she was with us about that. And her, her background, her experience, she's I have to say she really stood out.
She does, she does do a good interview. She did a great interview last time too, because I watched it on YouTube and I remember being impressed with her then. And I, and here she is in her car at a baseball game.
So-
Intelligently about zoning.
But, but also, I mean, she uniquely of all the candidates has, has seen both sides. She's represented developers, but she's actually, you know, written new, new bylaws, zoning bylaws for a town. You know, I, I think the depth of her experience can't even be rivaled by Jeffrey. It, she's, it's-
No, yeah, she, yeah, I agree because she really worked in in land use and real estate law for a while. She hasn't been doing it lately, but then she's very involved in the community lately and she had a long, I enjoyed that on her resume. This, that volunteering was a whole section of her resume. I think we need to make that something people can put in the application. That's one of the things I meant.
And there's something to be said for understanding the pulse of the community right now. It's, right, it's-
Yeah, yeah, yes. So speaking to that, I think Kevin, it's pronounced a Viersch. I was pronouncing it Wersch.
Yeah, me too. Oh, sorry.
But he said Viersch. I wrote it down so I wouldn't forget phonetically. But anyway, he, so I, I think he kind of probably does too have a good sense of what it's like to be a parent of pretty young kids here. He's lived here for fourteen years, but he has three kids and he's been coaching soccer and being a good husband to a PTO mom, wife. That's not an easy job. He's this big soccer coach dad. I love that. But, but the thing about him that I liked the most was the architecture when we, when we looked at his resume before. And now I have to say, he also does a fantastic interview. And you threw out some really tough questions at these people, at all of them, and made them really think on their feet. And I appreciate you doing that, by the way. And I, I thought his answers were remarkably well thought through, considering he only had a few seconds to think through them.
Yeah, well, he's, he's got the experience. He's, and I loved, I loved how he explained. I particularly loved the aspect that he said of, you know, bringing in stakeholders and understanding their needs and things like that in his job and his current job. He's, yeah, he's got, he's got a lot to offer. And we've got a very difficult decision to make.
Yeah, and then we have Dick who has all these years of experience being on the ZBA. And he seems to enjoy it. And that is, that is not a bad thing.
No, it's, it's a very good thing. And it's, it's, you know, it's very hard to to balance bringing in, when do you bring in new people? When do you keep the people who have the institutional knowledge and, you know, the, the years of experience? So, so in Dick's case, we do have people who have been on for a number of years. We have Mr. Rutan, who's been there for, for many years. And so it'd be kind of nice to, to get the whole broad spectrum, I think, from twenty years to one year or zero years.
Yeah.
And I think, I think the public have, have been asking us for that also.
You're right, you're right.
That we, you know, a message, there, the when, when there is a situation where candidates are you know, have special skill sets that would add, do you, you know, it's, it's really hard to say to a person who's been on for twenty-three years that, that, you know, something new might, might be better. But sometimes that is the case.
Right, well, like you said, I, I, I think it's an excellent point that we have two other people on the board right now who have been on the board for quite a while. And then Fran and
Mark.
Yeah, and then like a long time, like dozens of years or over a dozen years.
Yeah, particularly Mark, I think.
Yeah, I think he's, he's, he came on maybe right around the same time Dick came on. And then and then Paul hasn't, he's been on for-
He's been on for, I think, about six years.
Yeah. That's a sweet spot, you know, it's not a super long time, but he knows, he knows what he needs to know to do the job. And I think Brad, the other, the other guy, he's probably been a similar amount of time.
I think maybe a little bit longer. So, so we would have a nice spectrum.
Yeah, if we chose some new people this time. Yeah, that would really complete the spectrum.
So, so Kristen, the tricky thing is, is that I, I think technically we can only decide on, on the, the permanent position. We, it's the alternate would have to be a whole different process, a whole new set of interviews. Or is that, that's not-
Maybe we could just talk about that at our-
At our meeting, yeah.
At our meeting. But if we were yeah, no, because that's what you did last time. There was one spot available, four people interviewed. And what, what the board did, well, actually, I don't know what the interview committee did. I don't know if the interview committee said we'll recommend this person for the permanent spot and this person for the alternate spot. I think they might have. Um, but-
But that would have had to have been clearly defined in this, you know, on the agenda that we were also going to talk about an alternate.
Okay.
But, but anyway, we don't even know if an alternate position is available yet.
I think, if somebody applies for the ZBA, they are willing to be considered for the alternate job. We might want to just email them and say, if we vote on this at our BOS meeting on the eighteenth, are you okay with it?
Yeah, and let's just double check with our chairperson on, on the technicalities of that. But you, do you want, do you feel that we have enough information to make a recommendation to the full board? Or-
Yeah, I say we, I would officially recommend Suzie. Let's just, I'll just bite the bullet and say it.
I, I, I think far and away she, yeah, I, I, I think everything combined, she, you know, she would be a great addition to the, to the zoning board. So that will be our recommendation. And then we will get guidance about-
About who, if it's okay for us to give our two cents about who we can recommend to appoint as the alternate, if we can do that on the eighteenth, I think. I think we can because I think that's what you did last time. But it may have to happen in the full board and not here with us, I think.
Right, right, okay, all right.
Yeah.
All right, well, it's, it's, you know, we're so lucky to have had all of these candidates, one, everybody-
Yeah, yeah.
Different and good to the table. But a decision had to be made. So, okay. Anything else from you or?
No, I think I'm all set. I, I moved to end the meeting.
I second the motion. All those in favor of adjourning, that has to be a roll call vote, sorry. Are you in favor of adjourning?
I am, I-